And live in such a great place. Dear God, we just ask you to bless this city. Be with us as we make decisions. Make sure that we're making the best decisions for the people. Please guide us and direct us in all we do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Move for approval. Check.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is Discuss Tourism and Beautification Committee, and that is me. So let me give a little explanation of why we're here and how this even came about. We had a citizen that has actually spent a lot of time and effort, a couple, a lot of citizens that came together and put raised money to help with beautification for our city. So she wanted the opportunity to kind of talk with us. But in the meantime, I had our chamber president talk to us about tourism and some opportunities there. So we called a special meeting just because that's the only way we can all be together and speak with the citizens as a whole. So I would like to take a moment and invite Mrs. Hannah Rutter-Hall up and kind of let her discuss with us exactly some of their visions and what they're wanting to do.
Good evening. Wow. I want to just say that Fairview is my hometown. I consider it so. I wasn't born here, but I've lived here over thirty-some-odd years. Moved here in 1982. I think that counts as my hometown now. Giving birth to a child here, it's his hometown. There are a lot of people that live in Fairview that weren't born in Fairview, but that really cherish the wonderful things that Fairview has to offer. Enough so that they frequently have donated monies in a short amount of time, like in a day, enough money to purchase the wreaths for the Christmas season. I mean, it was just like fast overnight happened. Everybody just, and next thing I know, there's enough money to buy these. Of course, I didn't have time to discuss it with the city and ask them if they wanted them, which is a big burden. We realized, and I said, you know, this could be a very big burden for the city to have to take care of them. So somehow, some way, we might have to come up with an idea of how to help the city to maintain these things and to help the, you know, the streets workers have to hang them. And what a pain that is. And guys don't particularly care about fluffing the decorations and making the lights make sure they work. And it's a lot of time involved in it. We realized that. And in discussion with several of the people who donated these things, we talked about, well, what if we had a committee of citizens who would come before the time to hang them and would work together to get them all ready for the city workers? And all they had to do was hang them. And the heart, you know, the little stuff could be done by us down on the ground. And I, out of that grew some ideas for a lot of things that we could do in the city. Questions about, didn't we used to have a beautification something sometime, long time ago, where they had Yard of the Month? And the citizens were like given honors for having the best yard, voted, I don't know who voted that. And also, you know, businesses could be encouraged to dress up their skirts, you know what I'm saying? Make the businesses look great for the same reason. We are not the ugly duckling anymore. You know, there are a lot of people in Brentwood and Franklin and all of other Williamson County cities who have, oh, you live in Fairview? Why do you live in Fairview? Well, excuse me, I love Fairview. Fairview is a great place to live. We have wonderful people here. And it's time that we all realize that have been here for a long time. We are no longer an ugly duckling. We are a beautiful swan, and we need to start standing up and sticking our neck out and be happy and take, be proud of who we are. We're different than Brentwood. We're different than Franklin. We will always be different, but that doesn't make us less. In my opinion, makes us more in so many ways. And, you know, there are ideas that the people have for wonderful things that we could help either, and I'm not asking for money to do these things. I'm saying we want to get down in the dirt and dig the holes and find the funding, to raise the funds for things like. My dream would be to see the Veterans Park was actually a veterans park. Because as far as majority of Fairview knows, it's a pond next to a big ugly pile of wood. And it's not real pretty. And it's far from an honor to any of the veterans I know. I would love to see us all work together, you know, to unify the service, the people that are on the different boards, the chamber, all the people need to unify around an awesome thing like that. And we can raise the money. This city is not poor. And I'm not talking about this building. I'm talking about the people here. If it's something they think is worthy of doing, they will fund it. We just have to encourage people to know what can be done. What do they want to do that makes our city beautiful? And I think that if we had a board who could help to unify the chamber, the tree board, the Friends of the Nature Park, the Friends of the Library, all these events that go on in the city, and we could all work together, we could have an awesome city that you just, I mean, ten years from now, you'll go, whoa, we did that. And it wasn't just the city that did it. It was the people of the city that saw it do. We have to own it. You know, I don't know. When people are invested in something, that means they put their heart and soul in it. And that means they take care of it. If you build your house, you seek to do something really nice for your family, to build it up from nothing. You might have sat around for ten or fifteen years planning exactly what you want for your family. Why can't we do that in this town? We need to plan for our family. Our family is not just my family. It's their families. It's their grandchildren and their children, great-grandchildren. For the future, we've got to start planning together instead of this faction doing this and this one doing this. And everybody's scattered. Unify and beautify together and make it a goal, a common plan for the future. Just an example, John Blade gave me this rundown on the account that would, out of the blue, had to come up with Friends of Fairview for. And the monies that were donated over a very short amount of time, how much time was it?
Six months?
Five months. And in all actuality, it was really like two days. But over the five months that this account has been open, it looks like there were forty-seven hundred eight, four thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents that had been donated from the citizens of Fairview. In two days, by the way. That's one day for the wreaths and one day for, what else was it?
The employee lunch.
The dinner, that's right. So, and there's still, we have three hundred seventy-one dollars in the account now to still buy, hopefully, the brackets for the wreaths. I'm sure if we need to collect more, we will. I don't expect the city to pay for everything because God knows we're trying to take care of business as usual as it is. What I suggest is that, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and the Beautification Committee could work together.
Hannah Rutter, I'm sorry. I'm going to apologize to Commissioner Johnson. He asked me before the meeting started. He was going to have to leave for a prior commitment since this was a last-minute-called meeting. And so I was going to allow him to explain.
I didn't want you to think I was being rude, but I had sent an email on Friday that I was going to have to leave at 7:45. So just didn't want you to think I was just getting up and leaving while you were speaking.
Okay.
It's my fault. I should have said that. He asked me to. Good evening.
Well, I hope you are, you will consider what I'm suggesting. Because I would love to work with your wife on these things. Bye. Anyway, what I propose is that you all would consider starting a beautification board or committee or whatever you want to call it, that somehow we could work that with, looking forward to the future of how can Fairview grow so that, you know, I'm not about, what is the word? I think, I think actually John Cherry is better about the other stuff. I mean, I have ideas. Let's have Dollywood move into Fairview. That was just a blow, you know, out there idea. But that's not what I'm about. I'm about really working with people here and getting people excited about what can be. And I think, I think, I don't know what, how it's always been done before. And I understand you guys are doing what you do. But I think we have to, we have to be able to allow the people to participate in these kinds of things. It is their town. It's my town. It's your town. But if we don't own it and participate in it, then it's yours. And it's your fault that it doesn't work. And it's your fault and da-da-da-da. But if we all participate in making it happen and find solutions to the problems, then we're all in it, you know? Got to own it. And that's just part of what, I mean, that's just ideas that I had. Any question? No?
No, I just have a couple of comments. I don't know if you have more. But the beautification was a chamber program. And I think as the chamber had to take on more and more, that may have been. And it was hard to get people to come out and help judge and stuff. So it may have just gone to the side. It was a wonderful program. And I, you know, I think Saturday, people just coming out and picking up the trash, you know, the litter pickup shows the pride that people have in the community. And I know a lot of people worked hard because they liked the bragging rights. So, I mean, it's a great program to start. Even if the beautification, if we did go to a city committee, direct, you know, directive, not necessarily a board, but you could have a committee and they could make recommendations and, you know, have some leeway to move forward. I mean, I will start out to say I'm so thankful for the citizens who just jumped in and gave when they know there's a cause and just going and doing it. And so I think that I'm with you. Let's use, let's all come together. Let's use our resources and, you know, do something positive for our city. It's win-win.
Right.
Anybody have any comments on the committee or anything Ms. Hall said? Yeah, I'm going to wait till she's, did you have any more that you were?
Well, I mean, you know, there's lots of ideas that we could do. I mean, Jessica Cherry and I, over a year ago, were just throwing out ideas about, you know, I have a grandson and two granddaughters, and they love to go to the water parks, you know, those sprinkle things. But what if we came up with a plan or a way to create a multipurpose thing? And I don't know where it would go. Maybe it would be at the veterans park. Maybe this could be incorporated in a monument and have those squirt things come up out of the water. And, you know, in amongst the honoring to our veterans, there would be children there. Their parents could say, see, there's your grandfather's, his name right there. Or, you know, what, we could create something that could be multipurpose and have a stage or we have some of these music events. And, you know, Lane could come and play or, you know, we could have bands play. We could do a Fourth of July celebration in that park. Would that be cool or what? I mean, the possibilities are endless. It's what you can imagine, you know, what can you come up with? But we don't, we don't talk together very often. We don't say, you know, what about this and what about that? And yes, it does take money. But you know what? If you tell somebody something is going to cost this much, guess what they do? They donate. Fast. Fast and furious. It blew my mind. I mean, I couldn't believe how fast people did it. And so if it's worthy of doing, people will do it. And today, I know you all hate Facebook, and I sometimes hate Facebook. It can be good, and it can be, it can be a good thing. It's a fast way to get the word out to people when you need, when you need something. One, there was somebody who needed a wheelchair to get to their mother's funeral, I think. I mean, you know, could they have called here and asked for that? No, they, somebody put it up there. Does anybody have? And you know, within fifteen minutes, there was several offers for somebody to borrow the wheelchair for however long they needed it. I mean, this is an awesome town. We deserve to give them the honor to be as awesome as they can be. And I would far much rather have the positives of that kind of venue than some of the negatives that there are. But you're going to have negatives in every town. There's always going to be somebody who's grumpier than another. But if we can make it more positive, we've just got to be positive.
Well, and I like the fact that, you know, right now, obviously, you know, financially, a lot of y'all were here and you heard. But, you know, to keep moving and the citizens investing in their parks and their community, I don't know if calling it just beautification or just tourism, you know, may limit it where you could actually maybe not do the employee appreciation and stuff like the lunch. I mean, that was just, you reacted and you were able to do. So there might even, we might have to be creative on, you know, whether this is just a subcommittee of an existing board or if it's, you know, how we go about it. But I do, I mean, it's win-win. It's good for everybody.
I just want you all to think about the citizens that, I know you say you put out a call and nobody answered. I don't know why, but I put out a call and people answer. I'm asking you to use me in a positive way for this city, okay? And I don't know for how long God is going to allow that to happen. I have no idea. I just know that I'm not going to live forever, and I won't be healthy forever. But, you know, when we are, we need to be useful. And that's as best as I can put it. And I do, I do know that the people, the people of this city, a lot of people of this city provided for those wreaths. And they do want to make sure that those wreaths are hung next year. And I think, you know, I've heard some people say, well, we could just sell a few of them or sell them. And I'm not talking about the people that gave them. I'm talking about other people. We could sell them. Yes, we gave them, so you can do what you want with them. But I know that the citizens will be very upset if those wreaths aren't at least partially up next year, more than what they were. That was really awesome that the city could put those up where they did so quickly. I mean, we're talking about two weeks. It seemed like it was two weeks and boom, it was up. Mr. Hall did an awesome job pulling that together. And everybody who worked to get them up, awesome job. The people that went down there to pick them up, two trips down and back to get them. And they're very, very nice. But each one of those wreaths would have cost us three or four thousand dollars apiece. And we got all of those for that price. And they can be maintained, and they need to be. And sometimes some of them will have to be weeded out, and that's a lot of work to do. And what we're trying to say is that there's a group of people who are willing to maintain those so that the city employees don't have to use their hours to do it. And if we need to buy a new storage container to put them in, I bet you we can come up with the money to do that. Because if y'all sell the land on Deer Ridge, they have no barn. It's not an illusion. We are aware of that. So we want to help. And I'm just going to let that lay there and.
Okay, well, Shannon had, I'm between Commissioner Crutcher.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for all of your hard work and everyone else that came together to, I guess, create this Friends of Fairview and come up with the funds to purchase the wreaths and to do the dinner for the employee appreciation. That was nice, and we appreciate it. Couple of questions. One, I guess, I guess who do you envision being on this committee? Or have you thought about that?
I would, I would start out with people like Jessica Cherry and maybe John, if he's not too busy, which I know he's always busy. John Blade and other business people around town. And then have committees of groups of people who are citizens who would like to serve on that, on that committee. If it was a committee of people who would do the work, you know, like you might have a group that you want to meet with to brainstorm with, and then you've got the workers. And maybe the workers also come to those meetings. I don't know, the brainstorm meetings. Because the more ideas you have, the better things happen.
Sounds like that, I guess, the committee, based off what you're saying, would serve at least three purposes. One, to just brainstorm ideas, come up with ideas, which is what you just said. Two, there would be a service component where you'd actually go out and join with the city to do various work, whether it's getting wreaths ready to hang or whatever. And three, it sounds like would be a fundraising component as well. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so. I think it would have to be at least, yeah.
So.
Maybe somebody that can write grants. I mean, you know, there are grants out there to do things like the park, to help with those things. And we can work with the park, you know, I don't know what the park board does. I can only keep up with so much, you know? But there are, there are groups that do some of the things that we're talking about, but we can help them do them. You know, be the hands and feet.
You may have just partially answered my next question with respect to the grants. But what, what would be the benefit of this being a, short of the grants that you just mentioned? What would be the benefit of this being an official committee of the city, so to speak?
I guess because then you all would control it.
Well, do you really want that?
I don't care. I just want, because I feel like, I feel honestly, I feel like sometimes what we've done has, in a sense, made you all feel burdened. And sort of like, on one hand, yeah, we like it. But on the other hand, oh crap, now we got to deal with it. And, and that's not a good thing for, for the people to feel about how their receive, their gift is received, to be quite honest. I mean, I understand it because I can imagine being on that side. Now we got to deal with it. I mean, I totally understand it. But you understand what I'm saying?
I do. And my thinking was more if it was a group independent from the, from the actual city and wasn't an official committee, that you, that you may have more, that you may have more flexibility on one, what you do with your money, you know?
Yeah, maybe.
We might want to empty that fund out, too, if it goes under us.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to.
I have to say it part and blank, and he has a valid point.
I didn't want to go, I didn't want to go there. But, but yeah, you, you might not like how we decide to spend your money that you, that you've gone out.
That's true. That's very true. I, maybe, maybe, I don't know. I don't know. Can you come up here? Come up.
Those are my questions. Thanks.
Well, and he actually brings a valid point. I mean, I was kind of joking, but I did see where he was going. But there's some issues, like you might have to get, if you start taking in so much money, you'll have to get a 501(c)(3).
Yes, I know. We discussed that.
And then you have to, you know, you'll have to, you know, add that. So then you would have to kind of be a separate entity from us, yeah. So that, that is the thing. Now, I'm all for having commissioners, you know, volunteer to go serve on the board. And I'm sure you could probably find somebody on the board that would be interested. Now, it's being perceived, I mean, I think we like gifts. I mean, we, I mean, the wreaths I was very thankful for. I apologize if anybody made you feel like it was not something that we were thankful for. Because me, myself, I just, I loved it. I just love seeing the people come together and having that vision and doing it and gifting it to us. It wasn't about, you know, what are you going to do for us? But this is what we can help you do. And to me, that was huge. And so, you know, we need to figure out as a board, if we gave an impression that we were anyway not grateful for the gift, then we need to recheck ourselves. Because I think anytime people take their time and effort and their money to do something, we need to do whatever we can to do it. Now, I understand we couldn't get them all up because there wasn't the plugs. And it didn't mean we, we weren't thankful. But, you know, you do have to have the means to plug the wreaths in. And so there, there are some things and logistic. And I think maybe having that committee, when, sit down with the board or even come to a meeting and present, you know, some ways that they want to help and just having that open line of communication might be the best solution.
I'm open to suggestions. I mean, I by no means know what's the best course of action there. I just know that somehow, some way, when, when you have some people who have a vision for something good, and it needs to be allowed to be, to bloom. You know, I don't know any other way to say it than that. But I don't know what the answer is. I mean, initially, what I, the reason why I wanted to meet with them all was to throw this out there and say, what do you all think? You know, it's, it's not.
I've got some ideas if you.
Well, come on. I'm willing to share the poll.
Well, we're already, John, we got a C for 501(c)(6).
Chamber?
Okay, we've got, by the way, thank y'all for doing this. This is actually a good little thing that we're talking about. And everybody can, you know, we can get, brew some ideas here. By the way, we have three, there's three of us, executive board members here at the chamber. We have John Blade, who's our treasurer. We got Jim Powell. We have a beautification committee, and we've always had one. It's just that it's not always active because we've got so many events that we sponsor, and we're kind of overloaded. This year, we have more board members than we normally have had in the past. We're usually operating on seven or eight or nine. You know, people move away and stuff. This year, we have ten. We, we, I know we made an assignment, who was supposed to chair that beautification committee. And I've seen in our storage, we have those yard signs, who has the best yard of the month and stuff like that. And now that we, you know, spring is popping up in everybody's yards, starting to look a little nicer, we plan on doing that. But how far it goes, we, we weren't really going to do it for, Nancy, have we done that in the past? Nancy's here with us, too. She's been a board member for twenty years. Was it a yard, was it residential or was it commercial, the beautification?
We do this, actually, Nancy approved, Nancy approved exterior of their building. And then we did Yard of the Month.
We did one residential, one commercial. Okay. So we have a committee put together for that. Jim, were you chair of that?
I'm self-employed, too.
Okay. We've made a co-chair on every event, okay? We just, we've got so much, you know, we're juggling right now. But what I've done is I've made co-chairs on every event. Let me just tell you what our events are. We have not only that committee, but we have Clean Sweep twice a year, Taste of Fairview that's coming up again in, in May, right? So that, the benefits of that go to Meals and Wheels. We have the Business Expo that comes up the eighteenth of this month to benefit the, all the businesses in town. It'll be at the rec center. We have two mixers that we do a year. We have two luncheons that we do a year. We have two breakfasts that we do a year. We have the holiday dinner. We have the Christmas parade. We have the scholarship committee. And of course, that's not even mentioned, Nature Fest. Nature Fest is the biggest thing we do, which consumes months and months and months of our time. And with, you know, it's always the same people that does all this work, and it's all volunteer. Nobody's paid for this, and we love doing it. But it does consume a lot of time. So if something falls through the cracks, like this. So, if something falls through the cracks, like this beautification thing, and it, you know, I'm sorry, but, uh, we do want to do this. And we, we blew the dust, well, you know what? We don't have to have just our ten board members as on the committees. We can have committees outside of our board, and we would love you to, to be on that committee. So, Jim, you're, if you're a co-chair of that committee, pick, pick the people that you'd like to be on that committee. We are a, a 501(c)(6). We don't have to reinvent the wheel there. So, there we go. It doesn't, um, no, the beautification committee shouldn't be a government, uh, project. It's, that's not the proper role of government. You guys got enough to do already. Wayne Hall's working seventy hours a week, I know he does. He'd like to have a, a day off, and, um, we all deserve one. You know, so I think that's problem solved. We, we, you know, get a bunch of people that wanna do this, especially the people that ask questions about it all the time on Facebook. They can roll up their sleeves and, and be part of this. And I'm, I'm not criticizing them, but, you know, let them, if they really want to see some stuff done, then jump in there and, and get all they want, okay? Now that my kids are grown, I, I have some time to do that outside of my, my job. By the way, we, uh, Saturday night, we had a corporate sponsor for the, the Clean Sweep. We had about thirty, forty people show up for, for this. They provided the breakfast and a prime rib dinner Saturday night, and thirty-six people showed up for that. And, uh, they presented a program to us that they have a hundred and one ways that you, this is just suggestions, for, you can raise, uh, they will provide funds, their, their organization, their, their parent company. You can get up to a thousand dollars for your projects, for your service projects, any, if anything you can imagine.
You just have to know, you have to have some money.
You can, you can apply for it. And you, I've got the brochure, I've got the business card.
I need not to be worried about this, because I'm talking to them.
The money's...
The chamber's already doing what I want.
Yes, the money, the money is here, uh, the funding outside, outside of government. The, the, the private sector can do these things. We just gotta know where to, where to grab it. All right, so there's, there's one solution. There's one of probably many. And I'm sure, you know, there are corporate sponsors, if you ask, they're, 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 you know, Walmart, Publix. All these people are probably happy to help on these types of projects. Middle Tennessee Electric, if you ask them, they will, they will hang these things for you, um, they might. Now, look, there's another board here that we're not thinking about. The, now we'll switch to tourism, okay? There is this board in Williamson County that's been hiding from us, and they get the majority. You remember one, one day or several days that I talked about a hotel motel tax in Williamson County? In twenty thirteen, they collected two point three million dollars. And how much did they give to Fairview?
Zero.
Zero. That's right. Well, guess who got most of that money?
Brentwood and Frank.
The tourism, no, the tourism board of Williamson County. What's the name of it, Nancy? We looked it up on the, on the... Well, guess what? We're gonna have a little meeting with them. And we're gonna, and they, because their mission statement says that they're, are, uh, supposed to help the, the cities of Williamson County. And the last time I looked, Fairview was a city in Williamson County. In fact, we're the fifth largest city in Williamson County, according to the property taxes. I need to say that again?
They've probably grown in a right much higher than a lot of them.
Has that tourism board contacted any of the city officials here? And I wonder how long they've been in existence. Can somebody check into that? Twelve years. And they've been funded for probably that long, haven't they? Twenty, twenty-five years, they've been funded for at least twelve. Well, they've never contacted me. And I've been trying to follow this money trail and figure out why this chamber, for a dozen years, has been self-funded. And we really appreciate having an office provided by the city, and that saves us the trouble of having to raise money for that purpose, too. But we, we pay the salary through our fundraisers. You know, we had a meeting recently, and just back up a little bit. We had a meeting recently with the Williamson County Chamber, for the purpose of looking into, um, being absorbed by them and just not be in a Fairview chamber anymore. And then our, our board would become a steering committee. Well, we looked at their proposal, which involved pretty much, um, they looked at our, our list of events, our annual list of events. Well, they did this, the, the city of Nolansville's chamber, the, the Nolansville Chamber did the same thing. They decided to go ahead and, and do that, and just be, you know, merge. They canceled all their events. That was the first thing they did. And what they do is they have a, a quarterly luncheon in your town, and they send out newsletters, you know, email and whatever they do. And they take whatever we have left in your budget, and you, we get the, our steering committee would decide on what charity we could give that to. And, um, that'd be about it. You know, so I don't see the upside. I mean, I'm sure there's some upside. I haven't read everything in there. But, um, when I presented that to our board, what was our reaction, John? It was a big no. In fact, it was some, some real passion in there, uh, on that no. And, um, so I don't think the, I don't think the city would like to see us go away either. Because there's a lot of work that goes into this. And the city would have to take over all these things that we do, if they wanna do them. Or the tourism board of Williamson County would have to do them for you, if they decided they wanted to. They would have to take over Nature Fest. We'd be done. Or we'd be the steering committee on it to just promote it, say, you know, post it on Facebook that, hey, y'all come out to Facebook, I mean, come out to, uh, Nature Fest. But it wouldn't be anything like it was in the past. So, we're gonna chase that down. We're gonna have a little meeting with, with the tourism board of Williamson County and see what they have to say about that. We had, last year, if you remember, we invited the, um, the State Commissioner of Tourism, Susan Whitaker, had a, had a luncheon in July. And she told us that for every one dollar you spend on tourism, you get sixteen dollars back in revenue, sales tax revenue. That's, that's a good little return on investment. We have the largest park in Williamson County, and probably one of the largest parks of any small town in America. It's seven hundred and twenty-two acres. If you Google, um, Central Park in New York, it's eight hundred and forty-three acres, I believe. So, we're almost that big. Now, you can't drive through the whole thing, but it's got miles and miles of trails. You know, I'm preaching to the choir here. And a lot of people that come here to this park or don't live here. I think we had close to two hundred thousand visitors there last year. I know it was more like one seventy-five the year before that, but I'm sure there was an increase. Had to be close to that number. We do not put our brochures in the welcome centers or the rest stops along the interstate. We don't put them in hotels where tourists go. We could increase that traffic. It does close at dark. You know, people, visitors, tourists, spend their money and go home. And, uh, people that come to a nature park are, you know, that's gonna probably be a, a more upscale tourist. It would benefit the retailers, restaurants, gas stations, everybody that generates sales here. And the city would benefit from that, and the sales taxes would go way up. We could, um, w- we could take advantage of that, that asset that we have. We've just, we haven't taken advantage of that asset like we should have or could have. One of the assignments that I gave to our board members was to think about their sister city, anywhere in the world. Uh, Jessica's, uh, sister city was Swanee, Georgia. Go look at it on, on YouTube or, uh, it, they've, they've really got it going on in that little town. I like Blown Rock, North Carolina, because they do art in the park. They've been doing it for fifty-two years. They got a park much smaller than ours. And that little town swells up to thirty thousand people when they have art in the park. It's just brings in, you know, all the, um, real upscale tourism, uh, and they drop a lot of money in that town when they come, for the weekend. One day, actually, Saturday. They do it six times a year, from spring to fall. And, you know, I've asked the rest of the board to do that. I, I would like to give that as a homework assignment to everyone, anyone that's interested. Tell us what your sister city, what would you like Fairview to look like, you know, ten, twenty years from now? And let's, let's talk about that. Let that be an open discussion. I sent Jessica to a two-day festival seminar this past year at our expense, and, uh, at our personal expense, not the chamber. And, um, she learned a lot of stuff about seminar, I mean, about festivals, and what to do, what not to do. You know, one of the things, one of the challenges we have at our park is it's, it's hilly. You know, festivals tend to work better, outdoor festivals tend to work better when you have flat land. So, you know, we, maybe we're not doing it right over there. Maybe we need to put, the, uh, the main festival needs to be up in the parking area that we're using now. Maybe we need to do other stuff, you know, down below. We're gonna mix it up a little bit this year and see if we can, uh, get some better results there. Maybe we need to park, everybody needs to park outside the park. And maybe instead of, of charging for parking, we let parking be free and we charge five dollars a head coming in. I don't know. We're gonna have to change it up, and that way we get an accurate count of how many people we have. Uh, that's the way the Banana Pudding Festival does it in Centerville. They've only been doing it five or six years, and they, they outdo us in numbers. And we've been doing it thirty, thirty-one years now, actually, this coming fall. It's always the second Saturday, by the way, in September. This is off the, um, subject, but I, I guess this is a question for the board. Do we have impact fees on new construction, new homes? I think I asked that question once before, do we?
No, we don't. That is something I've actually, I've talked to Frank and Wayne about trying to get that on the, um, board. I mean, it's something that, it's a way that as these businesses come in, we could, um, and all the cities do it, so, you know...
Developers expect it.
It's almost expected, and we don't charge it.
They're laughing at us if we don't. And, um, and as a chamber, you know, member, I, I shouldn't be talking about that kind of thing, but they're not gonna go away if you don't do it, okay? It's not an incentive, it's not a disincentive for them to build here. What is a disincentive is the sewer problem we have. They're gonna walk away if we don't fix that. I'm just scratching notes here, so I think I've hit just about all of them. So, um... Yeah, I hit most everything. Any questions, comments? I know what I, I'd like to see as far as the future of our chamber. I'd like to see us fully funded, so that we can hire an executive director with a marketing degree. That way, we could magnify our calling as a chamber and really fulfill our mission statement. Because ten volunteers that have jobs, full-time jobs, really can only do so much. And you would see a chamber that would really rock and roll and bring you those sixteen dollars for every one dollar that's spent. We really would. We're not part of the government. Some people think that the chamber's part of the government. We're not. I mean, we're just like any chamber of commerce in any town, any county. We're, we're a nonprofit organization that, that promotes commerce. That's our mission. And we seek funds, any way we can get them, that's, you know, a, a, and a, funding from a, the local municipalities or county is an investment. It's not, shouldn't be a burden to you. You should see a good return on that investment. This chamber used to be funded by the city when it was poor, when it didn't have nearly the income it has now. It stopped back in, what, two thousand or something?
Well, I, I'll give somebody correct me. I don't know that anybody's here, but I think it was when they let this, y'all move into the, um, City Hall is when the funding quit.
I don't know, because I...
Yeah, if I recall correctly. I wasn't on the board, but I remember, um...
And run out of billboards office at one time, am I right?
I, I don't know. Now, Nancy, do you remember the history of all that, the funding and not funding and why and why not? Yeah, 'cause I was just, you know, I was just trying to get myself established here at that time.
I think if you look back, it was when we moved, the chamber moved into City Hall. It was around that time. And I think that, because it wasn't a whole lot of money. They weren't being totally funded. They were given a line item, um, you know, a donation each year. And when they moved them into City Hall at the time, I think that's when it started getting cut.
Right.
Um, there was some kind of marketing thing that was done three years ago? Yeah, did you know something about the marketing, um...
No, it's just that I've been to several chambers. Most of our chambers I see do, actually... Marketing person, they actually... Look to green businesses.
Right. Yes.
A lot of times we do that by, uh, associate with the chambers.
Can you step up? The people won't be able to hear you. Can you step up closer to the mic?
Yeah, come on up. Because I, I agree with you that if we had an executive director with a marketing degree, that, that, then we could, we would have that element.
American degree may be not what you really want.
What, what do you suggest?
You need somebody who knows how to run an organization, who, uh, basically knows how to put together, the business people together, knows how to structure the chamber so it actually is, uh, uh, makes money to keep it going, and knows something about business development. Uh, most chambers do basically two things. They, they, um, lobby government to get situations better for business that they see. They also do things to help, uh, uh, back government up and things to help with business. They go to, uh, other towns, other cities. Uh, I know going to Franklin or Brentwood would not behoove us, because they're fighting against us. On the other hand, uh, years ago, the Nashville Chamber dedicated industry to the cities outside Nashville, so they wouldn't have the traffic problem, but still had the growth within the city, and they did that for many years. Now, I don't want, I've been gone for eleven years, so I don't know exactly what's going on now. But most chambers actually, uh, try to determine where the business should go and be the most profitable for the community in the surrounding area. So, in a case like this, we might actually approach the, uh, Nashville business development and say, look, the, and have a plan built saying that this is what we have to offer business that could help increase Nashville's reach.
Well, and what we can do, let's do this for, I mean, we can set up a, if y'all wanna, um, do a meeting and kinda decide, you know, um, set up a time with Mr. Hall, and I'd be happy to join, kinda, what's your vision, if you wanna propose something? Obviously, we're in budget restraint, so where we're going, but, you know, kinda giving a vision, something to strive for, um, as a, you know, would be a great idea. But we won't be able to solve tonight's problem. But if, as a chamber, um, if y'all can kinda decide, um, you know, the vision, and, you know, we'll be glad to meet with you at some time. Yes.
If I can, and I, I, um, I was on the board of directors for the chamber for four years, and, uh, John will never like me again for talking him into coming in, but, uh, John's done a great job. Everybody on that board's done a great job, and I'm just not saying John, because for years, those of you who may have been on it, realized that there was just a handful of people that basically did everything.
That's right.
And, you know, from, from the president on down. I mean, it was down to six people or so that actually did it, and we had a few volunteers, but not many. And, um, so y'all've done a fantastic job. I think this is a unique opportunity to, to get a lot of gain into the chamber by having a committee like this work with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it's exciting, the vision that you've got, and you're ready, and I think you lightened my wallet a little bit during that wreath thing also, uh, as, as well as some other of us, but, uh, it, it's great. I love the decor, decorations. And I think one of the next things that should be on board would be getting them lit and getting proper hangers, and we've got time to get that done now. But I think John's got to hit it right on the head. I think working with the chamber is ideal for being able to recruit people in, uh, with everything. They already have it in place, uh, and they have a direct line to, to City Hall with Wayne. I think, I, I would love to see it go that route and, and embrace the thought and the theory behind it and make it work. Because the city's always welcome to something that's, that's not gonna cost us any money. Because the city's always welcome to something that's, that's not gonna cost us any money and gonna make the city better. Uh, if we don't, there's, there's somebody's just, should quit eating those crab apples and, and get off the boat. But i- if, if you want to do something with, let's say, um, with the, with the wreaths or whatever it is, it doesn't make any difference. But I'd like to see us put a sound system in down through here for something. So, when we do have different things, people can hear it across over McDonald's, well, in here too. But, uh, I, I believe Channel nineteen is working now, according to Wayne. Uh, but I think it's exciting that we can merge or, or get these two people working. You know, you've got someone that's got a know-how and a, and a, and a lot of people to raise over four thousand dollars in two days. And my arm still hurts a little, but no, I'm just joking when I hear you. I was glad to do it. Uh, but to be able to get that, and that's what the chamber needs, is they need enthusiasm to get out and, and do it with people that have the time to dedicate themselves to it. Because it takes a lot of dedication, promise. And so, I, I'm all in favor of you getting with the, the chamber and working with the chamber. And if y'all willing to do that, uh, come up with some ideas, suggestions, things that you want to do. If it involves the city property or whatever, get with the city manager and I can't see you having any roadblocks. That's all I got.
Y'all have anything to, um, kind of wrap up with? Um, the one thing I would say, I know the tourism, you know, I think your information is very, um, interesting. Um, I would love to be involved. I'm sure Wayne would too. If you do arrange a meeting or if you need us to arrange it, um, we'd be glad to. It's definitely a conversation I want to have. Um, because if there's a committee and there's tax dollars given, um, I would love to see Fairview take advantage of that and, um, definitely want to do that. I appreciate you taking your time out. And I really do appreciate everything the chamber does, um, for years. I mean, they have just always done the events and stepped up. And that kind of gives us that, um, small-town feel. And then it introduces people to our community, you bring people in. And it's a win-win and promote businesses. So, I, I appreciate, um, everything you do.
I have one little tidbit of information there. One of the first associations I had with the city of Fairview was the day I moved into my home, there was a welcome basket placed on my porch by Mitzi, uh, who lives across the street from me. But it was from the chamber. And I remember that to this day. And, and I really wish we'd get that back in, cause everybody's got a touch. You, if you're gonna buy something, you gotta have water bill or light bill when you move in. So, we're gonna know who you are.
There's another committee? We, you don't have to be a board member to be on a committee.
I, I, that was impressive to me, the way it went. And it was great for businesses.
So, anyone that would love to volunteer, when we send out our, you know, renewal memberships and any forms that we send out, usually have a questionnaire about what, you know, what, if you'd like to volunteer to help the chamber. And we've, we've restructured our fees and, uh, there's even a, a, a position where you can just be a friend of the chamber for a very low fee. Um, by the way, if we did merge with another chamber, the fees would go, would be four times what we charge, at least. It'd be, it'd be almost unfortunate. Well, for this size city, it's, would be pretty rough. So, the Williamson Chamber fees start out at three fifty a year. That's the lowest one for a small business. The, they sent France a bill for fifteen hundred to see if they just laughed when they saw it. Just to give you an idea. Okay. They, I really appreciate your comments because we would love to fulfill our, our mission and do those kinds of things. Yeah, thank you. I would, I would love to. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Um, if there's no words from the commissioners, um, I move, or if I can get a motion.
Move adjourned.
Okay, first and second, we're adjourned.